Sandy said we can get started. She's in the process. Select quality regularly scheduled board of selectmen meeting for Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty four to order for store of business pledge allegiance. Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the black and white states of America.
To the republic which stands with one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Item two, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Let's move on to item three, and that's approved minutes. Three dot one will be the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Second. Let me try your minds. Select one, uh, selectman Federici? I'll take that hand up as an eye. Uh, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Unmuted.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Uh, three dot two, uh, the minutes will be April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, special meeting. Uh, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second. Any comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici? Select, selectman Federici?
Aye.
There you go. Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Aye.
Those in, those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Now, I've got a couple of items I'd like to add to the, uh, agenda. And, uh, let's put the first one in is five dot A, and that is, uh, the approval of the State Street sidewalk extension. Uh, is there a motion?
Some move.
That's a second. Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Are those in the room?
Aye.
Right, that motion carries. Uh, and then we have one other, and that is an additional sign, um, application. Um, so we'll make that item number five, nine dot five. Uh, for meals on wheels. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Are you here?
Yeah, we got, we're here, yeah. It just seems there's a delay. Um, all right, those in the room?
Okay.
Aye, aye, that motion carries.
There's a little, little lag.
Item four, um, Board of Ed, uh, Director of Operations and Facilities, Cliff Gurnum. Four dot one, which is to discuss and take possible action to contract with Eastern Datacom. Under the Peppam, Peppam, uh, contract for the installation, the cell phone repeaters at Guilford High School, Adams Middle School, and Baller Middle School. Cliff?
Good morning, and thanks for having me. So this project, uh, is, uh, enhancement, uh, and helps our security, uh, at each of those schools. Uh, by providing, uh, the ability for not only, uh, staff and students to use their cell phones, but as well as emergency personnel, if an event were to happen. Uh, and we're in the school, they would also be able to use their cell phone. So, uh, as you can see here, these three schools that we're looking to do, the high school, Adams, and Baldwin. They all have very poor reception on the lower levels of each one of those schools. Uh, so that's where we're gonna start with this project. Um, it doesn't mean that, uh, the second floor or third floor doesn't need a repeater. We're just gonna start with the worst area and work our way, uh, into those other areas if still needed. Uh, we do have some hope that, uh, there'll be some bleed over from, uh, this project, uh, and the first floor into the second floors perhaps. So maybe we'll need less, uh, equipment and, uh, boosters throughout those areas. So, um, this project was, uh, looked at and reviewed by, uh, our IT department as well. So they're fully on board with this. Uh, the project was brought to the Standing Building Committee, and they reviewed the proposal and the cost for the project. And have recommended moving forward with Eastern Datacom under the Peppam contract, uh, in the amount of two hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy two cents. The funding for this project, uh, was approved at the recent, uh, referendum in April, uh, and that, uh, had four hundred fifty thousand dollars that was, um, allocated for this project. And again, this is the first phase of it. Um, we hopefully won't need all four hundred and fifty, but we'll see what the next phases, uh, costs us when we move forward.
Any, Charles?
I'll, I'll move this. I think communication is really important.
Agreed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I am disappointed that, uh, the high school being such a new school, uh, requires an upgrade like this already. I, it's quite remarkable that, uh, that school be, being so new doesn't have the, the latest, didn't have the latest and the best.
So I can, I can respond to that, uh, perfectly. So during construction, um, there was the thought that there may be a lack of cellphone coverage, uh, on that, uh, lower level. So they did put in some, uh, cabling for, um, antennas to be, uh, installed. But the full system was not, uh, put in there, there because they wouldn't know until the completion of the project itself. So they took a very small step to help us, but, uh, again, they did not install a whole system. They just did some wiring for us, which will help us as far as getting through a lot of the ceilings and stuff that are not easily accessed or accessible. Um, so that's, they did take some steps, but did not do a full system or, or anything of that nature. So there, there was some forward thinking on this.
It's a new school, you know, to, to not have full forward thinking, uh, was disappointing, but it, you know, it's irrelevant at this point in time. My communication is just too important, essential.
Good. Any, uh, further comments or questions? All right, uh, let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici? Hands up. Aye. Uh, selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, item five, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Goldblatt, um. Five dot one, consider take possible action to reinvent Rob Nevens and the Slim Nation program for the town and Board of Education employees.
Thank you. Um, I come to you this morning twenty-four pounds lighter than I was last time we had this discussion. Um, and six, six point, six point zero body fat lower than I was last time we had this discussion. Uh, since I participated, as did my spouse, uh, in this program, it has been very successful. And you see from the survey that we sent out to everyone, um, afterwards, that there's, uh, generally very favorable comments. We have had some people come to both myself and the Sharon over the Board of Ed, hoping that this would be, um, repeated again for, uh, employees who have not yet had a chance to, uh, participate in the program. And also potentially have, um, uh, a follow-up for those that feel they would, would need it. Uh, we had a few people, uh, go on the follow-up last time, I think it was a dozen. Um, and then we had, uh, forty people, we had twenty, twenty in each, uh, town and Board of Ed that participated in this, uh, particular round. And, um, Mary Jane is here as well with me to ask for approval, to once again offer this to employees who have not yet partaken in it for the full session. And possibly if people need a follow-up, uh, for the partial session. Um, and you can see from the results, it was very, very favorable, not a hundred percent, uh, which very few things are, but very overwhelming, uh, uh, results from the survey. And so I'm here to answer any questions, and so is Mary Jane, who can answer, answer for you. Once again, Mary Jane, be, propose a lot of medical fund?
I do have a question.
Yep.
No, go ahead, Charles.
Oh, my question is, how many are, are we doing the twenty and twenty again?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. It's just glitchy today. Everything's on like a delay.
Yeah, you are, you are a little time delay, Lou.
So the answer to Charles' question is, uh, we would, we would propose it up to a mass.
Yeah, it's really weird.
Of twenty people for, uh, both sides, I guess.
And the funding would be the?
Funding from the medical fund, again.
All right. Lou?
What is that next? Just what is that number?
What's the number? It was, uh, six hundred per person, right? So it's five, five fifty per person. So it was, uh, eleven thousand, pretty side?
Side.
Yeah, eleven thousand, eleven thousand, eleven thousand for each, twenty-two, twenty-two thousand total. Lou, is there a question?
Yeah, my question is, like, what percentage of the people that wanted to participate were able to participate? And if people were left out?
At last time.
To make sure that's either, you know, equitable, whatever that means.
Well, last time we were able to accommodate just about everyone. We put a few people on a waiting list. We had to do a, uh, a lottery, just, but all your few were unable to. Um, but I have had some people come up to me.
Okay.
Either, who was either missed the deadline last time, or, uh, we have some new employees that have heard about this that have been interested. Um, my guess is that we may not get twenty on the town side. I can't speak for the Board of Ed. We, we may not get twenty this time from the town, but I'm not sure, until we put it out there and see. Uh, and we're gonna try to, uh, put this out right around the same time as our benefits fair, which is, uh, the first week of June. So Rob Nevens will be there as well to, uh, to speak to, uh, people who want to meet with him personally as well. Anything further?
Okay, so you have a, a system in place to make sure it's, people who want to participate get a chance at least, and it's, and it's, it's a system to?
We do a couple of things, Lou. We have, Rob will do a Zoom call, uh, one, um, two different Zoom calls for people that just may be interested, just to hear about it. And see whether it's what they want to go forward with. First of all, like I said, he's also gonna be at our benefits fair, and then we'll set a deadline. And if we have more than the requisite number, uh, we would hold a little lottery. Uh, if not, we'll allow people, uh, to get in, and we would, uh, once again, because last time we were able to extend it to spouses, I think we had about, uh, half a dozen spouses on the, uh, town side. I'm not sure how many were on the Board of Ed side. Um, and, and we'll see what happens, where we go from there. Mary Jane?
I just wanted to add that the, um, Sharon and Linda will be having this same conversation with the Board of Education, uh, looking for their support of the project. And then at the next Board of Finance meeting, um, I'll be going forward to the Board of Finance for final approval.
Next question. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. Second. Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Yeah.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, five dot two, uh, Mitch has asked, uh, that we, uh, move that to executive session. Uh, and that would be the report on the OPEB benefits negotiation discussion. Is there a motion to move?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay. Uh, item six, consider take possible action to set a public hearing date of June third, two thousand and twenty-four, eight thirty AM at the Guilford Town Hall and via Zoom. On an ordinance banning cannabis establishments in the town of Guilford and cannabis use on town properties. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Uh, comments or questions? I think we have, uh, not quite exhausted the moratorium routine.
Getting close.
We're getting close, uh, but we do have a June thirtieth, uh, moratorium date. So Pete and I decided to put this in as, uh, um, the, uh, uh, an ordinance, uh, to ban the cannabis. We could always extend the moratorium that we have, but this would be a more definitive action on our part.
Uh, I, is, is it time to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay, um, that's, I'm all fine with that. I just have a question. Um, let's say two years from now, we got enough input, we got some, enough input from the public, or for whatever reason, we decided that we wanted to allow an establishment, um, can, how, how, how could we change that or could we change?
We could change it back by, via ordinance.
Okay.
I have.
Yeah. This resolution is for a public hearing.
This is just so there is no discussion that there wasn't a chance for the public.
Right, one more chance, because we have several.
This is a public hearing, and then we decide, uh, after.
Right.
Correct. So?
Question. I'm interested in the thought process behind picking the eight thirty AM time instead of choosing to do this at an evening time.
Um, we, just, uh, the traditional, the, we did the last, uh, moratoriums, we did, uh, we're done in the morning as well.
True, um, true, but we are interested in public input on this, and we've been saying that the reason that we feel we haven't had public input is that we haven't put anything out there for people to be able to respond to. So if that's the case, there might be response and comment, and evening would accommodate more people. I'd be in favor of doing this in an evening.
Okay.
Did you say good in the evening?
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, we could move the whole meeting to the evening. Yeah, I, I don't know. We gotta get rooms and stuff like that. I, I think Susan's got.
Meeting in the evening on that, on that first Monday.
You know, is there any reason why if we had the, the public, uh, hearing at this time, and we got some response that indicated people, more people wanted to speak, that we could have a second one? Would that be too?
We could do a second, but we have, but we have to, we have to, um, we have to move the, we have to, we have to make the decision before the thirtieth. So we could probably put, as long as we have the hearing, the, the, the required, um, uh, public hearing.
Right.
We just have, we could have something.
Public hearing open and then set it for another time and evening.
Right.
I mean, I, I understand Susan's point. It's just that from experience, a limited number of people show up. And there is always that, that group that.
I'm with Sue on this.
Problem with no matter what we do.
Lou said something.
Yeah, this is so frustrating today. I'm on, I'm with Sue on this. I would, I would have it at seven thirty. Whether people come or not is different from whether we give them the opportunity. And I think a lot of folks have made it pretty clear that the early morning meetings are a little more challenging for more people, um, for this kind of thing that we have been trying to solicit. I mean, it's really a, a, a weather gauge kind of meeting. I would have it at seven thirty that day, at night, or seven. Give everybody a shot. I mean, I know that stretches the day out. Maybe that creates staff problems. I'm sorry, Matt, if that's the case.
That's all right.
Uh, you know, that's my feeling is it's probably slightly better.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with the evening, that day?
I think so.
I'm okay with it, whether you want to do, make, but make it BOS on the hearing, or whether you want to split it any way works for me.
I, you know, unless it's absolutely necessary, I, I don't think I would have a voice like the meeting with the, the public.
Just have to.
So we'll do the board, the, we're meeting in the morning.
Me and morning just have a public hearing.
We could start it at seven.
Seven.
Sue, if we started at seven, do you, is, would you be good with that, or do you think?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, that just eliminates one more potential criticism. You got it.
Another question. Where can we get a copy of the proposed ordinance that wasn't in board?
People, uh, people, uh, be able to share that with us after we approve it.
All right, all right. I, I'm, I was surprised to see this on the agenda worded the way it's worded. I'm surprised to see it as a ban on all establishments. So maybe being able to read it will, will clarify that a bit.
Got it.
We didn't, we didn't as a board discuss, discuss this at all.
We, we have, we have not discussed it since the last time we had a, uh, the moratorium, uh, as a group, all right? Hey, Pete, um, what would, uh, what would we be able to do at that meeting? Would we, was it only to deal with the ordinance, uh, with the outright ban? Or could we consider, uh, an, uh, an additional moratorium?
Well, I, I, when you do a public hearing, I think it's implicit that, you know, any of the issues that are being discussed, um, can be dealt with by an ordinance. In other words, it, the public hearing is basically to see if there should be some modification to being what's proposed. So you, you couldn't pass an ordinance that's completely different from what the topic was about. But if, for instance, you said, well, you know, we're not quite ready, let's do another one month moratorium or something, that's very similar to a ban. It's just a temporary ban. So I would say you would be able to do that.
Okay.
The, the, I guess the outstanding thing is, if you wanted to do it right away that night, you know, the public hearing is, is just the public hearing piece. It's not a Board of Selectment meeting. So you might wanna consider, if you're gonna try to take action that night, also making that, uh, maybe notice it as a special Board of Selectment meeting to act on it. I'm just thinking out loud here.
Yeah, but we still have time, um, with the second, uh, June meeting, which will be on the seventeenth.
True.
Uh, to, to take our action.
True, true, okay.
All right.
Depending on what happens on the third, we have time to have a special meeting, and we can attend.
Right, right. Is there a motion to revise, uh, the original motion to, uh, change the time to seven o'clock?
PM.
PM, sorry, got my AM.
Yeah, as long as it's PM, some vote.
Second. Second. Uh, uh, any further comments or questions?
Would it be possible for us to add a discussion item to our next meeting to discuss the thinking behind the proposed ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good.
Anything further? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item seven, and there's a, a misprint here. Discuss to take possible action to set the annual town meeting for Monday, May thirteenth, uh, at eight thirty AM at the Guilford Town Hall and via Zoom to receive the annual reports from various boards and commissions. This is the, uh, the meeting that traditionally Sue and I, uh, have been the only participants in, uh, on occasion. Um, but this is when we actually receive the reports from the various, uh, boards and commissions that gets compiled into the annual town report, um, which.
This is not the budget.
Not a budget meeting. So, so unfortunate that the, that term came up. I think we've been talking about those for a while. Uh, so is there a motion to, uh, to set the annual town meeting, uh, to receive annual reports from various boards and commissions, uh, eight thirty AM, Guilford Town Hall and via Zoom? Don't move. Second.
Second.
I'll second. I just have a comment to your point, Matt, because I read that, had to read that a couple of times too. I mean, is there any way when we announce that, we can put, you know, town meeting dashboards, as some way of just letting people know at a glance what's going on? Because somebody's gonna hear, see this and get confuzzled.
Yes, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll make a clarification. Uh, we can send, uh, have Tracy send something out.
Sure, just the whole idea, boards, boards and commission reports would kind of do it, but whatever you guys think is right, something would be helpful.
It's the day before the budget meeting, which is the fourteenth.
Right. By charter, we're required to have it on the second Monday of, uh, of, of the month, so.
Sure. No, I'm not saying there's a problem. I'm, I'm on a call.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, guys. Sorry about that.
That's right, you're right. Five A. All right, you okay, Lou?
Yeah, I, I had to put my DND on.
Got it, got it. All right, um, so we have a motion and a second. Um, let me try your minds. Select one, uh, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. I've just been reminded that we skipped over five A, which was, um, the approval of the State Street sidewalk extension. Janice?
Hey, good morning. Thank you for adding the agenda item. Um, I just, I think I had mentioned once before to you that there's the, um, effort to extend sidewalks from where they end over by the, um, the housing complex on State Street, uh, to the north, uh, to connect to the new, um, affordable housing development that is just north of the highway. Um, we have also, uh, subsequently, there's been a new development, uh, um, that started on the other side of the road, uh, just south of the highway. That's, uh, incorporating sidewalks out to the streets. We also want to connect where they end on the east side of the road up to, to them. So, um, there's about two hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk on the east side, and then there's, um, just over eight hundred, uh, feet of sidewalk on the west side to be extended. Um, so by ordinance, the Board of Selectmen needs to approve an extension of sidewalks. Um, there are funds available that have been in place since before I started six years ago, almost, um, for sidewalks on State Street, which were considered to be part of that future Nut Plains project that, that didn't happen. So I believe there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars set aside for sidewalks on, uh, State Street. Uh, we would like to use our OnCall vendor, which is William Laid in Construction, with their pricing that they have in their, um, OnCall bid. Um, and we estimate it'll be, um, uh, not, not, not exceeding seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere between sixty and seventy-five thousand dollars to do this, uh, amount of sidewalk work. And, uh, we're hoping to get them in within the next few weeks, if their schedule allows. There's been prep work done already by our, uh, Public Works Department to relocate some, um, drainage, uh, catch basins and things that were in the way of the sidewalks. So, uh, with your approval, we'll proceed to, uh, get those sidewalks constructed.
I, I, I think that will be great. I drive that route every day, and, um, when you get onto the underpass, it's just all muddy and powerful, and, and, and it, it looks really nice, and then it kind of like dead ends. So just carrying it up to the Great Hill or Green Hill Development. I think that'll be very great.
Right, and we do have more funding in place to potentially extend it beyond that point. We just haven't, it's a little more complicated of a layout going beyond there with some smaller lots and impacts to private property that haven't been worked out yet. We haven't, don't have a design in place, so our intention is to continue to look at future extension to the north as well.
Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That was up.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Um, item eight, appointments and resignations. Eight dot one, act on a recommendation to appoint Rita Titoa to the Housing Authority for a term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Uh, some moved.
And a second. Let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Um, eight dot two, act on a recommendation to reappoint Ralph Casey as an alternate to the Public Works Commission for a term to expire on May thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Act on a recommendation to appoint Matt Weedman as an alternate to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll nominate that.
And then the second.
I'll second.
Um, let me try your minds. Selectman, uh, Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruah?
Aye.
Select, I'm sorry. Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectman Habbert?
Just go on.
All right, all right. Uh, that motion carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint Bernie Lombardi to the Building Code Board of Appeals, return to expire October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second, second. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, all right, she carries. Uh, act on a recommendation to reappoint Hersh Hernandez to the Hazard Mitigation Commission, their term to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
I'll second, okay.
Let me try your minds. Uh, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Matt, can you remind me what that commission does exactly?
Hazard mitigation. By state statute, we have to have a hazard mitigation committee, uh, which, um, looks to mitigate, uh, various, uh, they're predominantly, uh, ecological, environmental hazards. And that commission, I think the last, uh, the last report was about four years ago, which was done by, it's done by, with, uh, COG?
No, about a year ago, we just.
Was it a year ago?
Just produced.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a re.
Kevin, you want to talk a little bit about it for Lou?
That's a, um, Hazard Mitigation Commission is a group required, like you said, by statute to meet, to go over the plan at least once a year. The town's section of the plan, we're part of the COG plan now, which we've been for the past six years or so now. Um, they look at natural hazards, um, and try and mitigate natural hazards, um, such as hurricanes, severe flooding, severe, um, tornado activity, coastal flooding, erosion issues. Um, and trying to predict, or not really predict, but try to find ways to kind of reduce the effect on the, um, the public with those type of events there.
Okay.
Um, if it's like stream, severe flooding, be looking at culverts, are they big enough?
Um, shoreline flooding, um, they've been currently making, continually making recommendations regarding low areas and needs for, um. Future, um, mitigation of flooding areas, um, along our coastal areas there for, for continued access to neighborhoods and stuff.
Janice?
Yeah, I just wanna add, um, it's a required document, uh, from FEMA if we wanna be able to, um, qualify for any FEMA. Funding, uh, for any projects that we do in town or even private, um, grants that may be available through FEMA for hazard mitigation. So, um, we've discovered, I know, um, and C O G did too, in some of the local towns, uh, that we had been remiss in not having plans. I think Guilford had a plan, Branford didn't at the time, and then C O G took it over for the region. Um, to make sure everyone had a plan in place, cause some towns were left without plans in place after Irene and Sandy. And then therefore didn't qualify for a lot of the funding opportunities that were came with that, the disaster declarations. So it's, it's an important document, uh, for planning and for, uh, uh, also being, uh, able to take advantage of grants.
Is that satisfactory?
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. That's, uh. That's, uh, that, I just lost thread on what they were doing. That's great.
Got it. All right, uh, item eight dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Anthony Coppola to the Marina Commission for a term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Uh, let me try your minds, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Uh, eight dot seven, act on a recommendation to reappoint Ray Bauer to the Pension Committee for a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me, uh, let me try your minds, uh, select, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Eight dot eight, act on a recommendation to reappoint Paul Chell to the Board of Ethics for a term to expire on July thirty first, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Um, let me, uh, try your mind. Any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, uh, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Eight dot nine, act on a recommendation to move Sarah Thorf from alternate to a regular member on the Conservation Commission to fill a vacancy to. For a term to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion? And is there a second? Um, Lou, uh, selectman Federici?
Hi. Hi.
Um, select woman Renner?
Hi.
Uh, those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Um, item nine, request for use of town property, act on request from St. George and Knights of Columbus to place a sign on the green. Advertised in the carnival taking place August sixth through tenth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion?
I think I can move all of them.
You wanna move all?
I think they're all just, I don't mean just, I think they're all signed requests.
They're all signed requests.
They're not.
All right, is there a motion to approve, uh, all five signed requests that have been presented to us?
All of the, you know. The, the Knights of Columbus, the, uh, Rotary, Keeping Society, Woodfield, uh, signs on the green.
And also the one that we added, uh, as, as item five, which is Meals on Wheels.
Oh, I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Um, select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Um, item ten, committee reports. Sandy, anything?
No, we've been on a little break in, as I said, we're meeting on the twenty first of this month, housing.
Any other reports? I don't think we have any, right? Okay, uh, correspondence, uh, item eleven, um. In your packet, you see that, uh, there's a, a letter addressed to, uh, the Board of Selectmen from a group of concerned professionals. Related to, uh, their perception of how the interactions are, uh, being handled at Town Hall South. Um, and there seems to be some concern with the, uh, the attitude or the, the perceived attitude and willingness to work with folks. Um, and also, um, some concern about, uh, oversight. Um, they, uh, also suggested, um. That the duties of the hired, uh, the soon-to-be, um, uh. Economic Development Director position, uh, returned to the role that, uh, had been, uh, previously filled by, by Brian, uh, McLong and then. Um, by Sherry as advocates for developers, uh, homeowners, et cetera, with the, uh, Town Hall staff to help move things along. Um, so this is, uh, this is something I have not had a chance yet to, uh, talk to, uh, department heads about. Uh, and, uh, we plan on doing that, uh, in the very near term, so. Any comments or questions?
You know, it sounds like, uh, you, you're on it with, uh, with a potential hiring of an economic development. There were some changes there. We're no longer in co-op, well, I was gonna say we're no longer in cooperation with Madison, but it, the, the funding has changed or whatever. But you have that in the works and, and you're gonna meet over there. I know there's been a lot of personnel changes over there. Uh. I, uh, I, I'm assuming that between your efforts. And we've invested some technology over there and I can appreciate that there's some turmoil associated with that also. But, uh, I would love to see a follow-up report in a, in a few months that, uh, you know, if, if there were any changes necessary. Or if there are other changes that we have to be involved in, uh, I think that's important.
Hmm.
Uh, whether they're real or their perceptions, I, I, I think that we have to address this seriously.
And when you say follow-up, um, I would advocate follow-up with the signers of the letter, but, but then also the staff of. So, or whatever staff you feel is appropriate with both, you know, to your both sides.
Well, follow up with us.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and I don't know whether we're at the meeting or it's just you and Mitch or however you wanna handle that.
I think we'll, uh, remitch myself and, uh, and, and the staff at this point. Bring you guys in, uh, as, as appropriate.
Okay.
I, uh, I've had conversations with at least two of the folks who have, uh, uh, submitted, uh, uh, submitted their, uh, had signed this letter, so. Uh, and that was in the last week, so. All right, more to come.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's disappointing, but not shocking. I mean, we, we had, you know, zoning rewrite, we've had technology changes, we've had personnel changes, so.
Right. I agree, Charles, there've been a number of significant changes over there, uh, particularly as it relates to personnel, the turnover, um, and, uh, on the, on the staffing side. I spend a challenge, um.
You know, and he, and the, the, the economic person has always been an advocate. If a lot of this conversation is about commercial development and, and the economic, uh, development. Personally, we've had in the past, was always an advocate, you know, along those lines, so. Change is good, but it's a strong.
It is. All right, uh, thank you for that, um, old business. New business? Public forum. Yep, come on up.
Good evening, this is eighteen Silverloaf Road, Guilford, Connecticut. I just wanted to thank you for making the calls, uh, during the previous budget. To remind people to vote, putting the sign out and doing everything you could. I know at the Board of Finance, uh, special meeting, they mentioned that, you know. They didn't know if it was that helpful. They've done things before. You know, we kind of get the same people all the time. But I, I do think that you never stop trying to reach out to the public. And so I see that you are planning to do everything you can to, um, remind people or invite people to the, um, meeting on the cannabis. And I would hope that you would continue to reach out to people through text and phone calls and signs any way you can before the next budget. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else we should address board public forum? Okay, um.
Division.
Yeah.
That's executive two.
Yeah, we've gotta go into executive.
Okay.
So this is gonna be a challenge on how we handle this. We have some folks who wanna, who are going to, uh, wanna be heard under item sixteen, which is discuss and take possible action on appeal from, uh, the elderly tax relief program.
How many appeals do we have?
Uh, we've got, um, we've got several here, but there, uh, one gentleman in the room. And I believe there are at least two members, um, uh, on the call, uh, Bill Rivera and James, uh, Kleinkoff. Um, so, um, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle this, cause normally we, uh, we, we take these one at a time with the, uh, the applicants, but.
If we have.
Um. Matt, I can, Matt, I can move them into whoever you're gonna take first. I can move the others into the waiting room, and then when you're ready, I can let them in one at a time.
That's great.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, yeah, we'll do the, in the room first, uh, the two in the waiting room, uh. So is there a motion to go into executive session, uh, for, uh, the purposes of, um, let's see. Uh, report on O P E D benefits, negotiation discussion, uh, and the employee vision program. And the elderly tax relief program appeals. Is there a motion going?
Some moved.
Second, second. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, second, yeah, selectman, uh, Federici, yes, select woman Renner, yes, in the room?
Hi.
Hi, all right, could we? We go. Uh, is there a motion come out of executive session?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Try your minds, selectman Federici, there's a hand up, yes, select woman Renner? Yes, there's a hand up. In the room, all in favor, here we go. Um, yeah, in executive session, there were no motions made, no actions were taken. Um, but as a result of some deliberations, uh, there were seven senior tax appeals, uh, 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 considered. Um, and the board has, uh, granted four of those. Uh, one has been denied and two, uh, have been tabled, uh, uh, going back for more information for our decision, so. Um, the other, uh, option, the other thing that came out of executive session with discussion on, uh, the employer sponsored, uh, vision plan with Anthem. Uh, on a presentation made by, uh, uh, Mitch, uh, Goldblatt, Joe Spurgeon and Mary Jane Malvasi. Uh, and is there a motion to approve, uh, moving to the employer sponsored vision plan for, uh, our town and Board of Education employees? So moved. Second?
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions? No, all right, let me try your minds, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. Um, I believe that fulfills our obligations for today.
Matt, Matt, no, wait, before you do that, can you, I sent you a text about the meeting room for the public hearing on the, um, cannabis. We, the community center is not available, um, so we have to have it at Town Hall or you can change the date. Um, June third, June third is, June fourth is available in Monontucket.
Do it here, cause it's easy zoom. Yeah, then we'll do it here, cause it's, uh, we get, we can zoom.
Okay, so Town Hall's fine on the third, perfect.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
All right.
At what time, seven thirty?
Seven o'clock, seven.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
That, that leaves time for other activities. I didn't say why.
Yeah, all right, um, is there a motion to return?
Some moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, let me try your minds, selectman Federici.
Hi.
Select woman Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, you know, this is, this is harkening back to the days of I S D N in the telecom world. Where video conferencing was choppy all the time, uh, so.
I, we, we, I got an email halfway through the meeting. There's something wrong on our end, I think.
Yeah, I, I.